Good evening. I hope everyone survived the stormwell. This is a meeting of the Hampden Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health being held in the Townhouse Auditorium on January 8th, 2024 at 6:00 P. M. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. We are recording this meeting. If anyone else is recording it, please indicate by sending a chat or raising your hand or being done. The first item on the agenda is the minutes. I see December 11th circled here.
Yes, I was planning on giving you the 4th and the 11th, but I realized this afternoon I made a mistake on the 4th. So I'll have those ready next week. You have the 11th there.
All right, December 11th, 2023.
Mr. Lynch is coming in at 6:05.
He basically did a brief board reorganization. We did a public hearing on this variance for a septic tank at the Shell Station. Discuss the milpond issue with the Conservation Commission. John Booth is here with a business proposal. I note that he's going to be before the planning board, I think, next meeting. Ryan Department Chief was here to get approval for members of the Building Committee.
Don, can we check and make sure they've all gotten their certificates?
Yeah.
All right.
Digital Equity Plan Vendor, liquor license, we approve those. Town Administrator, we talked with the Community Paragon. They'll be here this evening, that was an update. And Pro the Theater Guild used the auditorium.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Can we find out where we stand on the milpond committee, though?
Hopefully not in the water.
All right, the next item on our agenda is Mr. Bernard Lynch, Community Paradigm, An Update of Town Administrator Search. Are you there, Bernie? I don't think he's on yet.
Yeah.
Oh, two minutes early.
Two minutes early. Probably trying to get in.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the one day liquor license.
Is that official?
Yeah, why not? I mean, we got a minute.
Don's got it.
One day liquor licenses for?
It's in your folder.
Scannick River, Hardeston Sip and Create Event.
Okay.
At the Senior Center on the date of, you know, the date of February 22nd from 5:00 to 9:00 P. M. Typically, this is a beer.
I think it's after that.
Yeah.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Check.
Check.
There he is.
Okay, cool. Tax work off.
Right on time, huh?
All right, let him in.
I did.
Bernie, are you there? Mr. Lynch?
Up there he is.
Loading.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Yes, I can. Sorry. Took me a minute to get the technology going here. I apologize. So, um, thank you for having me here tonight. Let me, uh, our purpose here tonight is to give you an update on where we are with the Town Administrator Search. And if I may, I'd like to use a PowerPoint to sort of walk you through the process that we've gone through, where we are now, and the, a presentation of the three candidates that we are prepared to bring to you for interview on January 18th. So if I may, that may be the quickest and simplest way to get this going, so, um, let me do that.
Do you want to go into participants, Bob, and then make him co-host? No, not that one.
All participants?
Nope.
Not that one?
No, click host only. Yeah, and just then just close that, host only. Yeah.
Yeah, we're done.
Close that.
Yeah.
And then just click on where participants is. Nope, nope, no.
Why I'm not, why don't I want to let everybody share?
That's a can of worms, Bob. Let's just hit host only.
All right.
And then X that out. And then down at the bottom window where it says participants, you got eight participants, click on that arrow there. And, or click on participants, so all of them, all of them reviewable.
Yeah, okay.
Bernard Lynch.
Yeah.
And then click on the dots.
Okay.
And make co-host. There we go.
Okay.
And then close that one.
Now you got all the power, Bernie. Go for it.
Yeah, I will. I actually, I took advantage of that opportunity to, uh, get the PowerPoint up and running here. I'm working it off different computers, laptop and desktop. So thank you, Bob, for doing that for me. So, all right, let's see. All right, so here we are. Presentation of Town Administrative Finalist to the Hampden Board of Selectmen, January 8th. So, uh, we were engaged by the town back on October 19th of '23. Obviously, we had some meetings with the town several years back to discuss the town administrative position and the town's needs. We're happy that, as you move forward now to select a new town administrator, that you chose us to work with you. And we were happy to come on board in, towards the end of, end of October. Just by, you know, by way of explanation, particularly, I know the board members are aware of this, but for the public that may be present or those that are at home watching, you know, we don't just post an ad and, you know, take whatever is out there. We actually try to understand the needs of the community and try to find people that meet those needs as we go through our recruitment process and our evaluation of candidates. So we spent some time over the course of the next few weeks, you know, identifying the town's priorities and then specifically the attributes that board members in particular felt were important to, for us to be looking for. And through all that research and the stakeholder interviews that we conducted, we developed a position profile that I know that you, as board members, reviewed at a prior meeting. And that sort of laid out some information about the town, the information about the, the projects and ongoing needs of Hampden, and of course, what you were looking for from your next town administrator. And so that was a very, we thought that that was, we feel that's a very important process. We want to thank the board members for participating in that. We also had the opportunity to gather information from department heads, as well as some other interested stakeholders that, you know, sort of stepped forward, that knew we were doing this work and, you know, provided us with their, their information, their background as to where the town was with regards to various issues. We began our active recruitment on November 5th, right after you had made that, you know, given your approval to what we felt were the issues facing the town of Hampden. And obviously, we had, you know, started talking to people even before that, but thinking about the types of people that would be appropriate for this position. You know, I don't need to stress to you, I'm sure, because I know we already have the challenge that we have right now filling a number of these positions across the Commonwealth. I think I've identified to board members in prior meetings and discussions that there's been a tremendous turnover of town administrators across the state over the last four or five years. I think that we're now up near three quarters of the communities have turned over to the town managers during that period of time. So it's made for a very competitive environment, which makes this very challenging and it makes it necessary for us to have some real active engagement with candidates and, you know, really try to, to present the message about the opportunities that a community offers with regards to, you know, their, their, their chance to really make a difference within a community. We, we began that active recruitment, as I say, on November 5th. As part of that, we, you know, immediately, obviously posted this on the Municipal Association Job Board. But we also do other postings. We take advantage of the number of graduate schools in public administration that we have here in the Commonwealth. We have different organizations that we work closely with to make sure that we spread the word as far and as wide as possible. So we, we did all of that. That's more what I would consider more passive recruitment. Sort of in the middle of our passive to active is the database that we have, that we've generated, that includes all of the managers and the assistant managers and those members that are interested or participating in municipal management in the Commonwealth. So we have a database that we've developed that includes all those people. Beyond just those people that I just listed, the current managers, assistant managers and municipal management types that we have in the Commonwealth, we also have developed within that database a number of people who are outside of the state that may be interested in positions or that have, outside of the public sector, the municipal sector, that we've worked with over the last number of years that have expressed an interest in becoming town administrators or town managers here in the Commonwealth. And, you know, we were very proud of the fact that we are sort of the, we are the leading municipal search firm here in the Commonwealth. And as a result of that, people reach out to us because they've expressed an interest in serving in municipal government in a management position. So we've built up that database over time. Now, totals almost 400 individuals that, you know, we distribute this information out about positions so that they can, they can look at it and determine whether this is the right fit for them. But beyond that is the more active, specific outreach that we do to candidates. People that we know of in a geographic area that may be interested in becoming a town administrator or town managers within municipalities around them. This is a very geographic type of business. Most people are looking for something close to them in terms of where they live or where they currently serve that they, that they're familiar with. And so we focus much of our energy on that, although I will say that we're not limited to that. We do look at people outside the area that might be interested in a, in a community, you know, sort of the size and scope of a town like Hampden, and we contact those people and make that outreach. One of the factors that we utilize quite extensively is the fact that we're very active within the Suffolk Mass Municipal Association Graduate Certificate Program in the local government. And we take advantage of that to find people that are interested in becoming municipal managers here in the Commonwealth that are taking advantage of those programs the Municipal Association provides. And we reach out specifically to those people through phone calls and other means of contact to, to get them to look at the positions that we have available that meet their requirements, meet their needs, meet their current experience levels. Our application for deadlines was December 20th, and of course, that was right before the holidays. So we, we had that, that we had to go through. But we did receive a number of applications as of December 20th. In the end, we had 10 applicants. What we looked at for these candidates was their municipal career experience. That was something that we heard from the, the board members and from other stakeholders in, in the town because it was essential that people had experience in municipal government in some form, so that they knew what they were getting into in terms of reaching out to or working with different levels of government, state or federal agencies, the regulations, laws that municipal governments operate under, and that they had a specific interest in Hampden. Not that this was just any job that they might be applying for, but that they had a specific interest in Hampden. We wanted people that had an understanding of the form of government. And by that, I mean that they understood the role of the Board of Selectmen, they understood the role of the town administrator in the town of Hampden, as well as town meeting and various elected officials that Hampden has. Clearly, Hampden is not a city. Hampden is not a form of government that has more of a centralized form. It has more of a decentralized form. But they had to understand how that all operated and their role within an organization like that. Based upon the feedback we received from, again, board members as well as the stakeholders that we spoke with, the knowledge of municipal finance, municipal finance in Massachusetts is different than other states. It's also much different than other forms of government or the private sector. And we wanted people that understood all of the aspects of municipal finance. You know, as of today, right now, there's, there's all types of discussion going on in state government with regards to the state budget and some shortfalls there and what that means in terms of cuts in, in local aid or earmarks. It's essential that people understand how finances work in municipal government. So we felt that that was important based upon what we heard, as well as municipal law. You know, how zoning takes place, how procurement takes place, and how the functioning of local, of local governments occurs. Very important that we heard was infrastructure project management. We needed someone who understood how, how to manage a project and the variety of aspects to that that, that we looked at of what people understood as to how the projects were funded and how they had to be managed. Municipal procurement is an essential part of the Hampden Town Administrative Position as well as personnel management. How do you, how do you work with the human resources? Those assets that local governments depend upon to deliver services. And above all else, perhaps, the importance of interacting with citizens and citizen boards. More of, again, less of a centralized form of government that exists in other locations. Towns like Hampden need to understand the importance of the volunteers that step forward and provide services within the communities. As a result of that, we, we looked at these 10 applicants and we chose five candidates that were, we identified as the best candidates to move forward with you tonight. We did have two, we did have two withdrawals. One accepted a position in another town because they felt that that was in their, in their best interest to, to take that, that particular position. And we had another that, based upon further discussions, determined that Hampden was not going to be necessarily the right fit for them based upon their experience and what they could bring to the table. So we have three finalists that we're presenting to you tonight that we would like to bring forward to you to be interviewed on the 18th. The first is Christopher Caputo, and this is done in alphabetical order. Chris has a bachelor's from, in science, a science degree in finance from Bentley University, one of the premier business schools here in the Commonwealth and arguably region and beyond. He has had a number of positions, and I apologize, I immediately noticed a typo here in my, my PowerPoint presentation. He did serve in the town of, he's currently serving in the town of Agawam as a treasurer collector. A position he has served for a little over a year. Prior to that, he served as the treasurer collector in the town of Springfield, the city of Springfield, right next to you there. He'd also served as a city auditor in Westfield, as well as the assistant town accountant in Long Meadow. And I will be sending on these resumes to you for your, I'll send these off as soon as we end this, this meeting tonight, so you have all this information in front of you. He's also served a number of capacities in the city of Springfield prior to going into Long Meadow. But I, in speaking with Chris, he's looking for a position that he can sink his teeth into. It's more of a management position utilizing his background in municipal finance. Brian Domina is, has a, is currently the town administrator in Waitley. A position he's held for the last seven plus years. He has a, his law degree from Pace University, as well as a bachelor's degree from Northeastern University. Prior to serving these seven plus years in Waitley as town administrator, he was a senior planner at the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission for approximately seven years. And he was a law clerk at a small firm, Zarin and Strine Metz, for two years prior to that. Brian has extensive knowledge of municipal government and, you know, has served in a similar role in the town of Waitley. And he currently resides in the town of Southampton and is looking for the, the next step in his career and believes that Hampden is a place that he could bring those skills that he's learned in Waitley and through the planning commission, as well as his law, legal background to, you know, have an impact upon the town of Hampden. Ryan McNutt is our other candidate. Ryan recently concluded his time in the town of Palmer, where he served as city manager for approximately four years. He has a master's degree in history from Pittsburgh State, as well as a bachelor's degree from Pittsburgh State. Prior to being city manager, town manager in Palmer, he was the city manager in Clamont, New Hampshire for approximately two years. Clamont, as you may or may not know, is a, is a challenging community in the western part of New Hampshire that has a number of challenges, given the economic conditions of that city. He, he was able to serve there for, for two years. And we've spoken to people in Clamont that have spoken to his experience and his background. Likewise, we've spoken to people in Palmer and the relationships that he's, he had there and the work that he has done there. Typically, of the feedback we received on Ryan as well as the other candidates. You know, before, you know, before serving in Clamont and Palmer, where he served as a manager, which is more of the chief executive role in both of those communities, working in a council manager form of government. He did hold a similar position to Hampden's as the, where he served in Lancaster as a town administrator for almost three years and worked with town meeting, worked with the Board of Selectmen, and had an understanding of his role as a, as a town administrator. Prior to that, he, he was in Pittsburgh as, in a couple of positions with Mayor Wong, who's currently the town manager or town administrator over in South Hadley, right next to you there. But in Pittsburgh, he was the chief of staff to Mayor Wong for almost two years. And then she moved him into the position of director of housing. So he has some background in, in grants, in development, as well as the general management practices of related to being a manager. We feel that he too is, is someone that is worthy of some, some conversations with, with the board. The interview date with regards to next steps, the interview date that we've set is January 18th, I believe at 3 o'clock. The interview topics that we think would be worthwhile for the board to look at, but obviously, this is, is a decision the board needs to make with regards to these, is, you know, get a sense of their specific interest in Hampden, as well as speaking to their career earned along the way, what they, what experiences they could bring to this position and specifically to the areas that are important to the town of Hampden. We want to talk about their overall style, particularly as it relates to working with the different volunteer boards and committees that you have in the town of Hampden. Municipal finance is obviously, you know, underpins everything within a local government. And we want them to have a sense of the philosophy, that you to have a sense of the philosophy that they have regards to municipal mana, finding, financial management. And so we want to get a sense of their understanding of that, how they can communicate that to you. We know that in speaking with board members, that one of the aspects of the last few years that you're particularly, you know, pleased with where the, where the town has been is with regards to the grants that have been secured. So we want to get some understanding of, their knowledge of grant, obtaining grants, as well as managing those grants. So the grant experience is, is very important. The project management, the procurement, to ensure that the town is abiding by the necessary state laws and state regulations regarding procurement. But beyond that, managing projects to see them through to completion. Community character, we understand is important to the town of Hampden. So their understanding of planning and development is, is crucial. Personnel management and community relations, interacting with citizens. And above all else, their relationship, so what they envision as their relationship with the Board of Selectmen to understand the roles that they see in working with the Board of Selectmen to institute policies and then execute upon those policies to completion. So those, those are your candidates. Those are the, the, the next steps as we see them. And happy to take any questions. And otherwise, I will get you some draft questions associated with these interview topics and get you out those resumes, so you have those at hand. And of course, we make ourselves available to, to speak with you individually over the course of the next 10 days before we actually move forward the interview.
So, thank you, Bernie. So these meetings are to be conducted, open meeting, these interviews, open meeting?
Yes, these are, all of these meetings at this point are, are an open session. The only point of executive session is that after you make a selection, you would go into executive session, all likelihood, to discuss terms of employment.
Okay. And do you advise asking each of them the same questions?
Actually, I, we, we prefer a method of asking them all the same topics. And by that, I mean that, and this will become perhaps more clear when I send out the, the draft questions to all of you. And is that we have, we have a number, these topics that I've listed there, we would recommend that there be a general question for each one of those. And we're happy to serve as a facilitator to this discussion. This is in fact, the way we do it in most communities now is we play, we play a role in introducing the candidates to you that afternoon, that evening. And then during the interview process, ask the candidates a lead question in each one of these topic areas. But then have the board members participate by engaging with the candidates on the various probes or follow-up questions associated with those topics. So consistent topics, won't ask anyone different than another. But we may, you know, based upon their responses to the questions that we present, you may have different follow-up questions or probe questions to dig down into their knowledge of their, of the areas or their experience in the particular topic areas, you know, based upon the responses that they provide you.
Do, can this be on Zoom?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you recommend a, like a scorecard?
We can provide, we, we can provide you a scorecard if you, for lack of a better term, or rubric, that in these particular areas where you may focus in on keeping notes or, you know, actually scoring individuals. Keep in mind that these generally would be considered public records. We like those to be as positive as possible or all involved. There are going to be candidates, candidates should be, in our opinion, candidates should be chosen based upon the positives that they bring to the interview or the position as opposed to negatives. So we, we recommend that, and we can certainly provide you with a, a document that you can and and we can certainly provide you with a a document that you can keep notes uh and scores uh and then use those in your deliberations and your discussions to make the points uh necessary in order to uh make your decision.
My thought was we would we would invite the department heads to sit in on the interviews, not ask questions, but be there so they could get a feel for persons as well. Is that okay?
Absolutely. Yeah, I I I think that that's a great idea and uh I know that you're you're planning to meet on the eighteenth. Uh what we haven't spoken about is when you plan to make your decision. Uh I would think that uh if you're getting any type of feedback from people, that that should be uh more offline uh and that uh you know, you're able to get that type of feedback from citizens as well as uh any department heads, any stakeholders uh so that you make your decision uh based upon that, based upon your own expectations, your own uh sense of who makes the best choice and then your uh any feedback that you receive as a result of that.
The eighteenth is like a Thursday, is that it? And then our next meeting would be the twenty-second. Uh I don't know how you feel about if we'll be ready by then.
I don't know about ready. I wonder if Bernie, we could have the documentation you're talking about available for us to look over at our meeting next Monday. So rather than getting it at the eighteenth, if we had any questions among ourselves about the scoring and.
Yeah, we we what what we'll do is this may take a couple of emails uh to you. Uh we'll get the the resumes out to you within the next uh you know, uh fifteen minutes. Obviously, we wanted you to have uh you to be able to make this presentation to you tonight and then we'll get this information out to you in uh email form and then um the questions and the scoring will get out to you by the uh uh end of the week. Uh next Monday is uh Martin Luther King Day, so I'm not sure what your plan is with regards to meeting. Uh but what I would recommend is that we get this and then anything you want to sort of feed back to us, we're happy to take and uh I kind of work with you to make sure that everyone's needs are uh covered.
Yeah, our next meeting will be on the sixteenth, the Tuesday.
One question, um Bernie, your recommendation, I know this is an open meeting, but do you recommend having the people in separately? And that's, I mean, it's an open meeting. Technically, they can sit there and listen to the other person, but it would seem like we would want them to be separate in the room with us, not listening to. And that's hard to do. Some of these people may be attending via Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, I I I agree completely, absolutely. And uh I've never really run into a problem with this. Uh but we we tell the candidates and 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 I and by saying that, I guess I mean that um we set these up at a particular time. I've never had a candidate want to sit in on another person's interview and um we even uh we have had candidates uh question whether they should be there when the board makes their decision and and we uh advise against that. This is a board decision that should be made uh by the board without shoulder uh other than the citizens of the town. So we we tell candidates not to be there in the room when the board's making their decision. But you're right, it's a public meeting, it's an open meeting, they could sit in, but I have to say in the hundred uh searches we've done, uh we've never had candidates sit in on each other's interview. So we will, we will set them up accordingly.
We can invite all four or three
Right.
to uh come uh at three o'clock and have one here and let the other two stay downstairs in the TA office or the selectman's office and we'll take them one at a time.
If they're physical, I mean, some may be a virtual one and then you just you just don't admit them to the room.
That was just going to be my question though. I mean, I I would prefer to have all candidates in person if possible. I mean, yeah, I mean, if I think it makes more of a better conversation and.
I think they will agree to that.
Professionalism, you know?
If you want a job, I think you agree to something like that.
If I if I may, I I expect all these candidates to be all relatively local uh and um I I would expect that all of them will be there in person and if I may, I I all due respect to Bob, I I think what we would do is we would have the first candidate come in at three fifteen. We would have another one that we would schedule for four o'clock uh and they may have to wait a bit, but we'd have them at four uh so that if the board's ready at four, they could take that person. If they have to wait till four fifteen, that's fine. Uh but we'll have the next one ready at uh you know, probably four forty-five, five o'clock and then I have them committed at that point. So the worst the worst thing of all is when you're the last person to be interviewed, but you've been sitting there for two and a half hours. Uh there isn't, you know, that that isn't fair to the person who uh is in that position that whereas the first person just gets to walk in the door.
Okay, any other questions? Nope.
I have to say, I watch a lot of selectmen's meetings around the Commonwealth and your name comes up a lot, Bernie, I have to say.
Hopefully positively.
Oh, definitely. I mean, they reach out for, you are like uh number one of their choices for helping them on the search.
Well, we it's been it's been and we've had far too many, uh while I appreciate the business, I it's it's been far too busy over the last few years. There've been too many retirements. It's just uh very challenging. But thank you.
Only thing I would like to add is um if we're meeting on the eighteenth, then it's going to be a couple hours going through these candidates. Um you know, Don had recommended having department heads sit in. I think we should take the following week to solicit feedback from the department heads to Bob and then he can relay that information to us. So then maybe in the twenty-ninth, we could have a decision rather than follow on.
It might be difficult for some to to schedule two hours to.
They can look at the recording, they give them to look at the recording too.
Right, right.
Yeah.
All right.
Right, that's that is a great thing about uh with, you're right, it's with the technology, it's great to they could just go back, they can watch it over the course of a couple of uh a couple of uh views and and be able to have a sense of the candidates.
Maybe we could solicit any questions they might have to us and it's our choice whether we want to ask them.
Yeah.
All right, good. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Bernie.
Thank you, Bernie.
All right, thank you and I'll see you on the eighteenth and I'll get that uh information out to you right now. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Nothing else.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
If I can get somebody.
Next, we have an interviewer for clerical applicant, Melanie Nuhaus.
Becky.
Stick around the crowd, did you, Don?
Back and go through it.
And uh Hi, hi. Hi, Melanie, I'm Don Deavere, it's Greg Revest and.
I've met you before, I believe.
And uh Bob Markle and Lauren McCormick.
Hello.
So we're here to find someone. We we have, as you know, the cemetery commissioners all resigned. The clerk is gone, we have no one there. We're looking for someone to fill in for clerk. We've uh appointed ourselves the cemetery commissioners, but we haven't taken that office because we have to get clarification from the town council if we can even do that. So if we do any hiring for this position, it'll be uh as a temporary uh clerk for the cemetery, fill in with cemetery commission and then when they get the cemetery commissioners, they can reaffirm any hire. So. Okay. Well, so that's that, that's where we are. So very complicated over, you know, so uh go ahead, tell us about yourself quickly.
I live in Hampden. Um my family lives in Hampden, my sister, my brother-in-law, my nephew. We came from Long Meadow originally, just got back from South Carolina. A year ago, I bought Billy Bond's old house. So that is now my abode. Um I work full-time. So this is something that I would do after three o'clock pretty much. I do know that the cemetery commission, the it was by appointment only. So that's not an an issue. If somebody had, and cemeteries are closed right now, but if somebody had had to have a meeting, I can leave work to come and do what I need to do. That's something that I have the flexibility to do. I work from home sometimes. I'm just looking for something to fill in the gap. I like to work. I don't like to be idle. And right now, the hours at work, I'm in the construction business, so the hours at work are cut back for the winter anyway. So this is just something to give me, keep my mind going. Give me something extra to do and it's it's very interesting to me, the whole way it works.
This has nothing to do with the job. Where in South Carolina?
I was in outside of Myrtle Beach, I was in Conway.
Oh, okay. My daughter was a at the University of South Carolina as a a development officer. That's why I've been there back and forth to South Carolina many times.
I don't think I'll ever go back. I was there for five years, I had myself.
And you're at the former boulevard.
It's humid down there.
Yes, yes.
Flame state, yeah.
What?
So how did you first hear about this position?
Um I I think I was on Facebook, to be honest, and I said, I reached out to one of the Hampden pages and said, I'm looking for something part-time. If anybody has any, any, any idea of what's going on and um somebody popped up with the town was looking for help. So I thought it was quite interesting and my brother-in-law is at Salerno, so he was one of the commissioners at one point too. That's how this all came about and I went, let me go sit down and talk to somebody about it and see what it's about.
So your availability is only in the evenings after hours?
Pretty much, yes. Weekends, evenings. Um like I said, if somebody has, if they call for an appointment and need to see somebody, I'm flexible that I can do that. I can make an appointment and see whoever needs to be seen.
So you'd you'd probably be in this building by yourself in the evenings at night?
Yes, or the other option was that some of this could be done from my house with a VPN, is that VPN? Is that the word I'm looking for?
Yeah, I don't think we do that too much though, as far as I know. Do we?
We did during COVID quite a bit. We set up quite a few VPNs at that point, but I'm not sure with the paperwork down there, if that's going to be an option.
Right.
I'm not sure how much of it is online. I think it is a concern, I think, is you sense from the board that accessibility during the day. I know you said by appointment only, but somebody may have an issue, somebody has passed away. Their only time available is ten o'clock to come down and talk about a plot or something like that. Is there a recommendation for that type of?
Yes, I have the flexibility to do that.
That's that's a concern, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we're open Monday through Friday. You know, there's usually office hours during the day for walk-ins, you know, you have to be accommodating to the public, so. I mean, that's that's the concern I have right now, was just the availability might be a little limited.
Well, from what I was what I was told initially, specifically with that position with with the cemetery commission, it was by appointment only.
I think it's what it says on their page. I mean, she may have been in there during the day, but I think it is.
Well, she was usually there.
Doing stuff, doing stuff, right, but not meeting with the public per se.
Any other questions?
So I think as Don said, we may be limited that we are looking for a clerical assistant at this point of which the town administrator may designate your work to be in the cemetery department, which he can. But until there's clarification on our role as or our ability to do work as something we can.
Right, and then at that point of the appointment of a new cemetery commission, they would have to hire somebody in the position is a permanent fixture, not as a clerical help temporary for the town.
Maybe a lateral thing or.
But there's there's no guarantee that if a cemetery commission comes on that you might retain that position.
I would say your chances are good, but there's no guarantee.
I can't make guarantees though.
Right, I get it.
If they took the hours off here, then they they could be all those there.
There's a dearth of information on that page.
Yeah, they took it all, but I I I thought originally hours were like twelve thirty to four thirty, wasn't it? What they did?
Ann Daly's Ann Daly's hours you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, she would come in late morning.
Right, but not public hours. I'm looking at the town report to see what they published. Like it works, okay, try again. Right up there with you, Don, huh?
Are your mouths, are your mouths shook yet?
Kind of thing, I tell you. Yeah, see, they had hours listed there.
Right.
Yeah.
Monday through Thursday.
Was that the Shears Town Report?
Twenty-two. Twelve to twelve thirty-four.
Twenty-two.
Last year.
You got the twenty-three and twenty-five, yeah. So it was listed on the on the in the town report is their hours were twelve thirty to four thirty, four days a week. So sixteen-hour job. Is that what they shared with you or?
No, it was a, I could do it after work.
No, I mean the hours.
Yes.
Sixteen?
Yes.
Any suggestions?
I am concerned about the hours for public. Um I mean, I would say as you said, you know, you're available after three. I mean, I suppose I could publish the hours three to six or something like that, but five days a week, come up with a total.
Well, I think
And by appointment.
Two things, I think we gotta figure that out, but also I think maybe we should defer a decision until we get squared away if we could actually make the appointment.
It could make a big difference too.
You know, it is going to make a big difference.
I think uh the town attorney was reaching out for some clarification on that, I don't know. So I think we're, I must say our hands are tied at this point, but we want to make sure that you're protected as well.
Okay.
That's which is key, so.
And also was the the posting done properly for the job description with the job description and everything online before?
It was on there.
That was on the town page.
It's it's not there now, so.
No, it may not be.
I posted what they requested, so I took it down
Okay.
after they had notified me that uh
Okay, so it was done properly then?
Yes.
All right, well, Willie, I thank you very much for coming and I think we're just going to defer until we can find out if we can actually make the appointment.
Okay, all right, perfect, yes.
All right.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming down.
Appreciate you for coming down.
God, we're not sure we can give it to you.
Thank you, nice to meet you all.
Thank you.
Okay, chapter ninety mitigation money. So you're going to get a hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars in additional funding put through the chapter ninety formula or put put into the chapter ninety account. Half of it is through the chapter ninety formula, half of it uh through another formula, but the total amount is one fifty-two and the question would be uh how to use those funds. And in addition to that, we have the two hundred and thirteen thousand or two hundred and three thousand, one hundred dollar amount that was uh allocated to the town by the state gaming commission to design a main street sidewalk contingent on uh the the town receiving funding uh through the state's transportation bond to actually build the sidewalk.
So we know what's happened to that.
Or not only do I, we not receive that, uh the governor made two hundred and seventy-five million dollars worth of cuts uh this morning or announced them this morning and it looks as though uh revenues are going to run short and that uh it's not likely that we're going to see funding for the sidewalk on Main Street. So what I have to do and I did, I've been in touch with the the assistant, the administrative assistant at the gaming commission who organizes the whole effort and told her that uh on Tuesday morning of this week, I would give her a decision as to what the selectman would like to do with those funds.
Just for clarification on the chapter ninety funds, there's no requirements for what that can go towards or there is?
Yes, there are, the the chapter ninety requirements.
So they have to fall under that.
It basically design uh transportation projects
Okay.
and fund the transportation project.
And that is not on a timetable to find out what we have to do with those funds. We don't need to come up with a game plan.
You're not under any pressure to uh to spend those funds. I mean, a lot of towns will wait a couple of years and accumulate chapter ninety and then do a big project.
So if we're not hard.
No pressure on that.
Come up on that, there's no pressure to come up with the the projects or
Right.
sources for that.
I mean, one option, by the way, for the uh gaming commission money would be to take fifty and use that as our local match for the bridge design.
Right.
Uh that would leave you a hundred and fifty roughly uh to reallocate.
I I think that sounds like a smart idea, so that way we're not trying to put that on the tax base and don't know where that's coming from.
Right.
Um but you know, reading through the the areas of criteria that are acceptable for. But, you know, reading through the, the areas of criteria that are acceptable for projects in the mitigation fund. I mean, you have what? Community planning, transportation, public safety.
Right.
There's a bunch of different criteria.
You have a public safety proposal from the chief, the second one.
Right. And he's, he's already gotten money for that for the, the traffic enforcement. So. So we, we could choose to allocate more there. I mean, there's a bunch of different ideas I came up with. So I mean, I mean, I can list through them if you guys want to hear them somehow.
My, my question is the first trash of money you mentioned, you know, we got when we paid for the speed signs and stuff like that. Has that been completely expended?
Yes.
First hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
So closed out. It's closed out.
We didn't get a second hundred thousand before this 203?
No, we got 100,000.
Originally.
Originally. That's been expended.
Right.
And this is the 203 from last year. And then there's a new round unfolding right now. So we can, we can talk about.
Yeah, let's worry about what's on our plate right now.
Well, I mean, this. Yeah, we have to, we have to figure out what, how to reprogram 203.
We could do the, the 50 for the bridge.
Right.
And we talked about putting one of those flashing things over here across by the school library.
Let me run some of my ideas by you guys. So under community planning, there's been other communities that have used it for tourism development in their area. So one thought was we could do tourism development of local resources to expand and promote recreational activities as listed in the outline for Hampden's hiking trails and nature's paths along Minnetoga Mountain and Goat Rock. So we could use the funds for that. Under transportation, we just talked about it, add a crosswalk warning system to Main Street and North Road here. Under the transportation category, we could fix the crosswalk across from Rec Park because I believe Mark said at the time, they can't slant them anymore per DOT code. They have to go straight across the road. That would probably be a simple thing. Nothing crazy.
That wasn't covered on the original plan?
Well, if you look out there now, it's still.
No, I'm saying they didn't do it, but I thought it was part of the original.
I don't know. Just, just a topic. Under transportation, we could explore extending the Main Street sidewalk, not redo what's already here, but just where it ends and go to the end of the, to Summers Road, yeah, Summers Road. Under transportation, we could have a road safety audit done of the East Long Meadow, Allen, Summers, Wilberham Road crossroad, or do a transportation study along Main Street and Summers Road, where people have always complained about turning back onto Main Street. It's difficult. There's also a couple of other ones under public safety that are listed in the mitigation proposals from the state. You could use it to reduce impaired driving by instituting checkpoints, saturation patrols, education programs, or other demonstrated measures to reduce impaired driving. I think that's, you know, an important safety thing that we could follow up on somehow. And another one that they have under public safety is efforts to identify, monitor, and address issues related to human trafficking, drug trafficking, and money laundering. I mean, those are some pretty serious things that have been going on in our country lately that we could potentially help mitigate through in the area. So. But just a bunch of ideas I was jotting down. I thought, you know, if we're going to reprogram it, they're all acceptable based on what other communities are doing and what we could use in town.
I think one of the things, I think we had a quote from Italian bond originally for the engineering fee for Main Street was in the 150, 180 range at that point. Which, and I think I made this point before.
And then we, we extended that.
Well, I don't think we looked hard enough at the problem next to the river in terms, not a problem, but the fact that there's going to be a little more work between the VFW and this is New House's house to put any kind of sidewalk in. So I don't think their estimate, in my opinion, caught all things. Just like Don and I have talked about, the estimate for a potential sidewalk to the senior center, I don't think takes in the fact that there's going to be concom wetland work near Quad House. Right. So I think those numbers may be low. I think some of the plans that Craig has brought up are probably more realistic with that type of number. The other point I think I made at the last meeting is, in my opinion, the extra chapter ninety money from the so-called millionaire's tax shouldn't be used like chapter ninety money now. We don't fund enough of the work on the roads in town.
I agree with that.
I wouldn't turn it when Mark is desperate. We don't keep pace with inflation.
No, we don't.
So I'd rather see the highway superintendent come back in with, oh, my gosh, thank you for the extra. This is what we're desperately in need of.
I think he was going to come back with some ideas.
I had remembered that John had talked about at one point, can we find some way to redo some sidewalk on this side of Main Street?
Goes back with your bond thing, you know, if we're not to say the people on the south side, hey, thanks for knowing. People on the north side are like, what?
Yeah. Well, I mean, one thing we could do is also consider rebuilding the blacktop non-compliance sidewalk on this side.
But that would require, once you rebuild it, you've got to go out to, what is it? You said five feet?
Yeah, you got to do ADA compliance.
Yeah. I'll tell you where you'd have trouble is across from Casabella. That is pretty much down right from the fence to the road at that point, isn't it?
Yeah.
In front of Ginger's old house?
Yeah.
Personally, I think some of the, the community planning and the tourism development might be more beneficial than the sidewalks at this point, based on the amount of funding we have.
Right.
You know, if we wanted to do a couple of studies in some of the busy traffic areas, we could do that. But I think the, the key thing is.
I like, I like the tourist thing.
Tourist thing, right? I mean, we have the great.
I think you like the hiking thing. Yeah. I like that, Craig.
Yeah. But I, I think we should definitely do the 50 match for the bridge, just so we have that squared away where no ads going. And the crossing light out here. Those two things I think should be priority. And then if we want to, you know, have the idea for that, you know, the tourism development, you know, we have that roadmap, not necessarily the outline plan yet.
If somebody mentioned it, and I think you alluded to it, if we ever wanted to talk about upgrading the one on North Road, we'd have a problem because again, we, I don't think we can do it at a 90 degree and make it work out. That's why if somebody's questioning wanting to talk about that one, because it's a bigger, because the DOT regulation is set.
Yeah.
Right.
If we can think of an, of something in addition to the project that the chief is proposing for the current round, we could roll in the remaining amount for that project. We could think of something.
What do you, what do you say? What do you mean?
Well, there's a new round, the new round that's now coming out. And why not take advantage of that? And, but we'd have to have a project and ask for a certain amount of money. And then what's left over from the bridge and from the crossing, roll into this other.
What is this other project, though?
I don't know. I mean, we.
Well, yeah, but now you bring up, well, now he brings up an amount. Like you say, say we got another 200 from gaming again. Now you've left over $340,000 accumulated. Does that number get us to the sidewalk project?
Right.
You know? I mean, I thought Craig's point there is, look, maybe we don't do the 1.3. We, you know, the sidewalk ends, you have to have a gap of, I don't know. Maybe after that chap's property ends. Ms. Bennett?
Do you have to have a gap?
I'm saying maybe so you don't, aren't required to do an upgrade. You don't actually touch it. Maybe you have to have a gap or something.
I, I think what you're talking about is what they're, what Wilbraham is doing on Stony Hill Road. They, you know, they're doing in sections.
Right. That's one of the, yeah. Although I'm not crazy about the fact that it's black to black and you can't even tell if it's a sidewalk.
That's, that's very dangerous.
But, but I mean, they're, you know, they didn't do the whole extension. They did, I don't know, 1,500 feet or something.
Oh, no, but I've always been like amazed at how Wilberham, sorry, Long Meadow and East Long Meadow has put so much cement sidewalk in over the past 10 years, how they can fund that. Is there a different way they're doing it? Because as we know, you know, cement costs.
It's expensive.
Five times the cost.
It's expensive.
Maybe they just have it in their annual budget.
Could be.
They're probably, yeah, they're probably funding piecemeal, these additions.
In a lot of.
Just as the town is.
Well, I wonder if it's also part of a school thing, because a lot of the sidewalks are inside. What's the number? Is it one mile or?
That is, that's a, that is a grant program.
Okay.
To build sidewalks enabling students to walk to school. So my guess would be if it's related, if you see the pattern related to the school, that's, that's where they're getting the funding.
Well, you could upgrade the two asphalt ones because they're within a mile of Green Meadows under that funding. If you could find that funding source that they're using, that will qualify because it's within. And then the extended one, which is probably outside the one mile, we could take on with this type of mitigation, perhaps.
I think that goes against what Bob's trying to do right now because he guaranteed these people a decision, right?
Yeah. I mean, here's, the other thing that you mentioned would be to extend the existing sidewalk without rebuilding the existing sidewalk, extend it down to Summers Road. I think you're right. I look at that all the time. I think you're right that there are some engineering challenges there. And, but the, the design from tie and bond amount would be smaller. And the construction cost would be less. So. And to take what remains, maybe we want to do the tourism thing and then whatever remains, roll into a, another proposal to build that sidewalk, design and build. I mean, as long as they're willing to provide funds to make improvements, why leave it on the table?
So you're calling him tomorrow and you're saying?
Bridge, crosswalk, and.
And we got some, a couple of things we need to discuss about the rest of.
That's right. And I'll say, and we're, we're, we're going to give you a proposal for the current round. And we want to roll what remains into that new project with the current round. Unless, you know, we need to come up quickly with some kind of a tourism.
Ask them about the hiking.
Initiative?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I like that, too.
They, they promote it as recreational activities. So as long as we're promoting the recreational activity to get people off the street into.
Yeah, just ask them what kind of proposal.
Did you look at their webinar? That's where you got your information?
No, I got it from.
Sounds like.
I got it from, I didn't watch the webinar. It was from that whole pamphlet that you had, that's a while ago.
Yeah. So they've expanded, by the way, they have expanded the effort. I mean, and, and the categories where they're willing to provide.
Another one I thought was interesting in there, and I didn't mention it yet, but you could help promote businesses to draw in people who may be going to the casino to come to the area, you know, dining or entertainment.
You're going to the casino? Come in high candid.
Better use your money.
You go into a company outing. And you're not just going to the casino, though. They have entertainment there, too. So if they're going to see the entertainment, they look to venture.
All right. Do you have, do you have a direction?
I think I have enough, yes. I have enough.
But just further, can we confirm with Mark that he's going to bring forth an expanded proposal for construction?
Yes, I sent him an email. He may not have been in today.
Well, he wasn't, I talked to him, but they were doing a lot of cleanup.
Yeah, I sent him an email this morning asking to, to come up with proposals for the 152. So we'll get it, you know.
Cable TV contracts.
Choices are negotiate it ourselves or hire a lawyer. So.
I thought that chap you brought in was pretty, pretty knowledgeable.
He does it exclusively.
Right.
I haven't worked with him lately, but we, he did, he did the contract in Norfolk when I was there. He did the contract in Ipswich when I was there. And in both cases, I observed, and he is a fighter for the interests of the, of whatever the town, whatever town he represents.
What was his cost roughly? What was his, what was his fees? Remember?
An hourly fee of 200 bucks.
Is that gambling money?
And how many hours does he propose that he would need, did he say?
Didn't say there. I can refine that some with him.
In my opinion, I prefer to go with an expert, somebody who's.
I've never done a cable contract, so.
I mean, one of the things, as I told you earlier, he will do. He said, the first thing you want to do is to find out if the rate in Hampden is roughly the same as the rate in surrounding towns where they have a surcharge for cable access, for public access. If it is, that's a good place to start.
So, so he's got 200, $200 an hour, right? And he's discharged, the client may discharge at any time and turn him in the truck. So we can we can change horses in midstream if we have to.
Yeah, I see five to eight hours here, five to eight hours there, five to 12 hours.
I would tell you, Don, we're actually in good shape on law and claims. I would say we could afford to designate, I want to throw it out there, 10 to 15 out of law and claims towards getting the cable contract done. And I think it'd be appropriate out of the funding source.
The thing is, we don't have a lot of time and.
We'll entertain a motion.
I can.
I'll move to.
I'll talk with him and get some additional information about.
With a, do you want to say it not to exceed? Or let's get a firm proposal, number of hours. Let's start the ball.
I'll ask the number of hours that he thinks will be required.
Second. That leads to my next question about the cable contract. Have they reached out to us since last week?
No.
No.
Okay.
No.
This is another thing you tell me. They haven't even filed an application.
They're not playing by the rules.
So does that mean we can solicit another vendor if they want to come into the town?
Sure.
I mean, is that, would that lawyer guy have that information?
He will be able to say whether or not he thinks another vendor like Comcast would be interested. And, and part of that may come down to the infrastructure.
Right. Okay. Just curiosity, you know, I mean, if they're not playing by the rules now, I mean, if somebody else wants to submit an application, right?
Right. Next item on the agenda is tomorrow with the planning committee is meeting and this is, just for some background, this is a very early draft of amendments that the school committee is looking at that they would have to vote on. And they've asked everyone to take a look at them and have any comments. And we're, we're meeting tomorrow night with the planning committee. And so here's some of the.
Want to do any specific part of this?
Well, it's starting to begin. I mean, it's real quick, okay? So one of the concerns I have where it says, senior says restated agreement. They, it should, they're saying restated, but I think it needs to be amended because I think if you restated, you may have to go to town meeting and have a bat paper ballot if it's considered a new contract. So I don't know why they restated. Why not say amendment?
Either, well, amendment's going to go to town meeting, but you're saying there would be a requirement if it's restated.
Right. Well, I require a paper ballot. I mean, it's not a big deal.
Only takes 10 people to say it anyhow, so.
Right, okay.
Little handheld things.
So go back there. So the options, so what they've done is they listed some options. So it says like option one would be that this would read, students in grade K through five will continue to create their own communities. Right? And the other option they're looking at is residents of the member towns to attend schools within the district is designated by the committee. So the only point there is we, in the legal, in the litigation settlement, it's agreed that there is one town, one school will continue in Hampden.
So my other concern is the preamble, I think, was deemed not admissible in court, wasn't it? So whatever said in the preamble is kind of null and void anyway, right?
Well, what I'm going to say, it wasn't deemed admissible. It wasn't, it was a mission statement, but not black letter.
It wasn't bound by the part of the agreement.
Part of the contract. Yeah.
The other question I had there is, I don't know if I necessarily liked them designating it as committees. I mean, shouldn't it still be abbreviated if anything to H W?
Yeah, I think so, too. I don't know why. I don't know what the.
Right. Because you start reading it further down as, you know, the, the committee, the committee. I mean, the committee is the regional school district.
All right. What do you got on the composition? Okay, this is interesting.
Yeah, I have some comments on this, too.
Committee. Okay. So to count, so under the law, Mass General laws, do you have that other slide there? I want to give you one of the that what it shows the different options.
The law itself.
Yeah, that one there, yeah. No, there's a, I sent you a separate email on it.
Oh, I, I guess I don't have that.
It's chapter 71, section 14E.
Unless it's attached here.
Probably not.
You know, it would also, if they could send this back in a more user-friendly format, this was no doubt scanned and it was scanned to a PDF and.
Keep going. It's probably, you probably don't have it on there. Keep going. It's probably, you probably don't have it on there.
Right, back to the top.
Go back to the top, go back to the top. So anyhow, the, the law says that you have five options in a regional school committee for the one man, one vote. Option number one is that the people, the committee members are elected separately by each town, which we do now. But the problem with that is that we, we, at the beginning, when they first did the agreement, Hampton was at about almost two, two members of like 1.93, so was within the standard deviation. But now it's a lot less, it's like 1.7. So you have five options. And the second option would be that everyone's, there's seven members and they're all elected from, you know, at large from the two towns, between the two towns have an election. That would go well.
Yeah.
The, the third option is that you have at-large election, but by residents. So the people in Wilbraham could vote for the two residents in Hampton, and we could vote for the five people in Wilbraham, which is also not admissible. The third option is that it's a weighted, the fourth option is that it's a weighted, weighted vote. That's the one that most regional school committees in the state have now. And some of them are, some of the, some of the committees have, this is an example. In, in Rehoboth and Dayton, there's, there's a 10-member committee, five are from each, are from each town. But the Rehoboth members have 1.2 of a vote.
Oh, yeah.
The other guys have a 0.8 vote. And in the Kingston, there's, there's 11 or there's nine members. Kingston, each member of the Kingston committee has 14% of the vote. And the Plimpton people have 6% of the vote, and the Halifax people have 10.6%. And I asked about that in one of the.
Don't they have seven towns in Klavon?
Yeah, Klavon's got seven. The, one of the schools, one of the regional school committees had 16 members. And everyone had a vote like 2.5%, 3%, 8%. So the way it works is basically if this, if we did this option, which we have to pick one, one of the one man, one vote. Hampton, each Hampton representative will have 12.5% each. Wilbraham representative would have about 14.6%. So to make a quorum, you'd have to have the two 12.5s and two 14.6s to be over 50% for a quorum or a vote. That's how they do it.
At-large would not serve the interest of the school committee.
Is there any options that are, that give a better representation than what we currently have?
No.
I wouldn't think so. The district-wide one is totally out.
Right, and it really comes out the same. The percentage really come out the same that we have now.
Jeff, you wouldn't have the math done until the next meeting.
Right. Well, Aaron Osborne, who was over there, he worked for the Southern Berk, I think it was the Southern Berkshire Regional Committee, and he said they used to bring a chart, because they had eight towns, and they'd bring a chart. And to do a quorum, they'd say, okay, you're 8%, you're 2%, you're 15%, I'm 12%, okay, that's 50, we got a quorum. And then they would have a vote, and they'd have the chart, okay? You voted yes, that's 8%. You would have no, that's 12%, so we need to get a couple of 38% over here.
The only, and you make a point about the quorum, and this just came to me. The one danger you have is that you could have a school committee meeting with no Hampton representation.
It could.
Is there a way that that language should be in there, like?
At least.
That both towns must be represented.
At least one representative.
Right. That's all. And I'd never heard the danger happening, but to me, that'd be a nice check and balance.
But go up for a second, Bob. Right above this, it just says the composition. Where was it that said there'll be seven members, five from Wilbraham, two from Hampton?
Right.
So is that ever going to change?
No, that's never going to change.
Based on what you're saying, though? If it has a weighted voting system and we have a less population, will it ever get less than 1%? Or less than a one vote?
No. No, because you gets, it's the, you still have the two members, but their percentages will change based on the population.
But it would never go below?
Two.
Never go below two, right?
Never go below two.
Okay.
So at least it had two voices on there, although their value of their vote may be less.
Right, but I, that was my concern. I just want to make sure that their voice was never going to count for less than one.
And the last, the last, the last option is that the towns selectmen can appoint the school committee. So they would appoint five and we would appoint two, but.
Rather than an election? Rather than a public election? Wow.
But that'd be a whole change, though. So, so really you got two options, one option really, the weighted vote, so, okay, move along.
And just in reference to section one, it lists that the staggered criteria would be, the, the members would be like staggered.
Yeah.
What is the current really right now? Is Hampton every three years?
Well, it's just 3, 3, 2, 3, 3, 2, and sometimes one year a Hampton person is not elected.
I'm just curious, I mean, you, you don't want two people back-to-back years being elected in Hampton. You want at least have a little bit of overlap. You know, so.
Well, it's a three-year term.
It's a three-year term.
Term, right, but you wouldn't want to have somebody every year in Hampton be, or not every year, but back-to-back years.
But ask me with a three-year term.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I was thinking, trying to stagger it with Wilbraham a little bit.
All right, go ahead. Oh, I forgot there, real quick. This is all about the vacancy. Oh, you know what? I want to change the wording here. It says if a vacancy occurs during a committee member's term of office, the remaining members of the committee and the select board members of the town, I want to make it clear that the committee, that the remaining members of the committee are from the town.
Right, it's happened, you recall.
Right.
Right.
I think it said that, didn't it?
It kind of did, but it was a little wordy.
But I'd rather say the remaining members of the committee from the town.
Right.
And the elected board members from the town.
That town.
Just, just to clarify.
Right. We did it right, but it was a little like.
There was a little bit of a discussion about that, so I'd say they could change that. The other thing, too, is they have another organization, this is just minor stuff, but they have picked the chairman and the vice chairman by ballot. They've never done.
No, they do do roll call, don't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, I was going to do these type of regions. Okay, so this will be the controversial issue. The residents of the town, grades nine through 12 region, which they do now. And then residents of the town of the member towns in grades six through eight shall attend schools within the district as designated by the committee.
Will this change with the outcome of the planning committee? You know, your findings about, wasn't there talk about moving eighth grade to the high school and keeping the middle school of six and seven?
Wouldn't this give it a latitude or the committee a latitude?
Yeah, wouldn't, wouldn't that change be part of this agreement then?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So wouldn't we need to know that direction first before they knew that?
Put that back down to about who. Well, Sears says the town, residents of the member towns, grades nine through 12, that, that's got to be changed to eight. That's what they want to do, they want to amend it.
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Well, yes, but I mean, B then says, gives them the power to put A in the school of the high school. If you give them B.
We have to take A first, right?
Well, A stays the same.
As it is.
Right. And then B allows them to say, okay, grade eight, boom, will go to attend schools as designated, basically.
But yeah, you need to change it eight through 12 and then six and seven.
Well, you don't need to. That's my point with B, because that's designated by the committee. Okay, they're going to, the committee's going to vote. Grade eight is going to the high school. Under B.
Yeah, yeah, under, under A, it says, nine through 12 is automatically going to go there.
Right.
They could shift eight to there.
They'll leave it as a either or.
Yep. But that actually, you know, if people are concerned about a population change, it does allow them the flexibility of, rather than the agreement, oh my gosh, the agreement said eight through 12 had to be the high school. And it does give them flexibility if things change. They could bring eight back.
That's one of the discussions the school committee has had about, they need more flexibility because things are changing all the time.
This does give them that flexibility.
Yeah, it reduces the overpopulation now in the middle school.
Right.
But then if it changes.
Might have to change it.
Exactly.
So you got the elementary schools, go ahead. Okay, well, stop there. Back down, 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 down. Okay. Subject to provision, section barring requirements now and in the future, by following, all residents, member towns in grades kindergarten through five, inclusive will receive their education facilities located in respective towns. Okay? Or, option, residents of the member towns shall attend schools within the district as designated by the committee. Except this year, you don't have to provide. So I think we went 3.1.
Yeah.
Why is it 3.1 and 4.2? Why isn't it 3.2?
Probably just.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think you'd be opening up a can of worms if you're regionalizing down to.
Yeah, okay, that's it. All right, and.
Wasn't that the topic that was brought up before? If you regionalized lower grades, you could move kindergarten, you know, or whatever, the crosstown lines. Wasn't that the topic that was brought up?
Way back when, there was talk about all kindergarten being a Minutewalk way back, Don. Remember that? Oh my, what a firestorm that was.
Outside, okay, just, that's, that's special needs kids, you know, that they can sign a school. Outside enrollment. Okay, this is, this is the vocational school thing, okay? So you got, here's, again, it's options. They have any student that wants to go to vocational school, they can, the cost of the tuition would just be the same, would just be distributed as the same as the assessment. Or the individual towns could pay for that student. They could assess that, the individual towns would pay for the student. So if it's, if it's, if there's no students from Hampton that want to go to vocational school, we wouldn't pay that year. Wilbraham would pay for their vocational student.
Or vice versa.
Or vice versa.
Right.
All right?
Or we get a softer vocation.
To what extent is that happening now?
I don't know.
Not enough.
I don't know. Not enough.
Not enough.
No, no, kids, no.
Not enough vocational.
Right?
That's, that was our big push when we were doing the plan.
Yeah, and then, then the other option is, any student residing in a member town wants to go to vocational school, that the, everything would be built to the town directly from the vendors.
Currently, it's built through the school budget, right?
It's through the school budget.
I.
But it's divided up along the assessment.
Does it work this?
Right.
Yeah, is that way if a student goes to charter school?
No, if they go to charter school.
The district has a reduction, not an individual town.
Right, right.
I don't see a reason really to change how it's working.
No, I don't see, I don't see one either. They just throw the option. Okay, go ahead. This is the whole assessment. It is pretty much the same, and I have, I've asked Doug to look at this, too.
Yeah, he's had some.
I've asked Doug to look at this, so he's going to give me some input by tomorrow, all that, all that funding stuff, so keep going.
He's pretty good with that.
Yeah, he's, he's very knowledgeable in their capital costs.
You guys are YouTubeing tomorrow, right? It's an open.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Expensive national, okay, okay. Operating, this is, this is pretty much, nothing's pretty much changed there. Except the one question they have there is this, this new term they're using, foundation.
It was the state came up with that, wasn't it?
I think the state.
Foundation budget, yeah, that's a state, that's Desi's term.
So, so what's the foundation pupil enrollment? That's the same thing we have now?
Yes. There's a foundation budget.
Name. That's why they get all their money.
They had a consultant look at that. All right, go ahead. So that's just the spend, the expenditures, you know.
Okay, back up to the capital thing. Do we have, they have the number in there, right? That we had a cutoff number for what men capital, did that change?
That cutoff number is in the lease.
It is, okay.
It's in the lease. It's 30,000 this year.
Okay, I have to say, I think they've been generous with that in the past. I mean, I want to give some credit to the maintenance staff, Ed and the crew, that they were pretty good at, if something was 40,000. You know, we kicked in R15 and they took care of the rest, so it never really was a, they were all about keeping the buildings up to date.
Yeah, yeah.
This was the question here, under C, underneath where it says, appropriate, you know, the capital costs there, the capital costs.
That was the part you picked up on, Don, for the school part, for the Minutewalk, yeah.
So, yeah, the high school or any other building owned by the district?
Right.
I mean, the, the district only owns the high school, right?
Right.
So is that future-proofing it if the district were to jointly buy something?
Yeah, they'll build another building or something.
The middle school is next to it, yeah, right.
Now, would that involve, say, the district taking possession of its current building? How would that work?
That'd be pretty difficult because the district building right now is, that land is deeded to both towns.
Okay.
Any other building that took care would be on.
Okay.
Town property.
Right.
All right, go ahead. This is all the same, this is also.
What was this one about highlighting that?
Okay. Now, the finance, capital, children's, probably the towns in which the middle, okay, that's highlighted because if the, if they change, it's just the one middle school. You know, that's, that's going to take, they'd take it out, that's all. Portion of operating costs. And then there's, there's some options about, they're talking about different ways of, of funding. And there's, you know, a lot of town, a lot of the regional districts have rolling foundation people, you know, rolling student enrollments over the five years. They, they assess, so you take a five-year average rather than, you know, all of a sudden 50 kids don't, you know.
Now they use the October report, right?
Yeah, yeah.
This is my question.
We don't do E right now. We do it in eights. I mean, here they're showing quarterly.
So this is my question when I said earlier about district-owned building, where then they're going to, current Wilbraham Middle School will be treated as a regional building.
Right.
So, and then it says the enrollment, you know, the foundation, and the assessment method for member towns. So would we be then responsible for upkeep of that building?
What does it say?
No, I see your point, Craig. If they're calling it a regional building, therefore we, remember that was our question back in the day, like, oh no, the town of Wilbraham has the parking.
Right.
The roof.
So if they, any other building deemed owned by the district was previously before that section was questioning, and then under A, the assessment there, the assessment method, you know, which provides the assessment to each member town. So are they, would they be deeming the middle school as a regional building and then for, it's part of the district?
We're now liable for 20% of the cost.
Right.
Okay, we don't want that. Right, the last ratio cost. Says, well, I know, I had it.
Go back up to that thing, though. We are, we don't pay quarterly at number eight.
Were you seeing that?
We, you remember how you see that $900,000 in the, in the warrant every?
Pretty, that eight times a year or something.
It's like eight or, yeah, so.
We want to keep that?
No, it's because it's wrong. It's showing four, and we haven't done four in 15 years.
Okay. Well, that's, okay, that's wrong, okay, okay. All right, what else we got? Well, this is operating costs again. Okay, well, I think this.
Now that you've pointed it out, that's pretty clear.
Yeah.
I think the part Craig brought up is, is critical.
Well, I, I think it's here, too. Capital costs occurred for the Minutewalk Regional High School, the school currently known as Wilbraham Middle, or any other building owned by the district.
Well, actually, that's, that's a really good definition right there because even if they put the kids in Wilbraham Middle, that building is not owned by the district.
Right.
Right. So that's still a town of Wilbraham building, so it wouldn't fall under that. They may be leasing it, but it's still not owned by the district.
Right, and then it just says, you know, in subsection A there, each member town's share shall be determined by the computing, the ratio, yada, yada.
I don't think it qualifies.
But it's, it's leading down that road.
Leading down the road, right. I think it's, I think it is leading down the road.
It is, 100%.
Yeah.
Because we already know, we had the report of the deficiencies of WMS, which were in the 10 to 15 range.
Yeah, but, but by reading this, it looks like they're changing the verbiage down the road.
If we doesn't.
I know, but that own part, I think is critical there. They don't own it.
Here's your.
There again, it's quarterly.
Four equal installments. Talk about that, too, okay? And the transportation is, mission to withdraw all of towns, it's, you know.
That's, that's state almost.
That's state, that's, yeah, the state, keep going.
We go by the part where a new member town could come into.
Yeah.
Line up at the door.
Nobody's locking it down, right?
That part there back before. That part there back before, and I know you had it highlighted, that July thing, that was a request of the school committee a few years back.
Yeah.
They wanted to make sure that even though they changed the membership, they could stay through graduation, basically, because they had served with these kids and nobody really had a problem with it.
No, no, that's not, that's not a, I mean, how to amend it, to see your.
Then nothing's changed.
Operating maintenance, I think, I think that tentative maintenance, operating, but they're going to take that out of there because that was, that was, the tentative is, is with the first year, you know.
Well, that was the big thing about the new, you know, and I don't think they put any money into that really since, have they really done?
No.
Yeah.
Will they continue to present capital items as a menu on the warrant? Or are they going to go back to the lump sum?
They only do it as a menu.
Which is fine, but I think the definition of what they consider a capital expense, I know, Craig, you've talked about this. I don't want to see computers on there as capital expense. I don't want to see desks in there. I mean, that's, you know.
Servers, Wi-Fi.
Yeah, right.
Subertel made a good point at the meeting when we were talking about capital expense. She said, look, you don't put textbook, you never put textbooks in there as a capital expense. Textbooks were textbooks. So everyone uses a laptop now, so, you know, it's not a capital expense.
That's a textbook.
Right, sure.
Oh, you know what? We passed it, but also there, you don't have to go back to it, but also on the student transfers, there's a strong feeling on transfers that in the agreement, it says the school committee decide, they want to have the administration decide. They make, Dr. Bartempi made the point, look, I don't know anything about these kids. I don't know what their academic record is. I don't know what their.
Remember they pushed for the, basically the superintendent to approve transfers before, yeah.
So that won't make sense, yeah, you know, right. Other lease, blah, 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 that's it.
Okay, that's a list, okay, now it's right.
All right, I guess that's it.
Changes on TWB if they're asking, right?
Yeah.
That it?
Yeah.
Good recap, okay.
All right, that's it. That's where we are in that.
You got some notes there, Don?
I got some notes. Vote to tax work-off program increase. That's just a technical thing. We voted, we voted eight people, we didn't vote $1,000.
I looked back in previous notes because when it went from $1,000 to $1,500, I couldn't find where the board took a vote on either. But if we just want to make it safe and sorry, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the assessors.
Yeah, recommend it.
The, per the states, yeah, like the legislature chair that we took this vote. Yeah, tell the state that we, we make a motion to approve their recommendation, $2,000.
Spend more money.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make sure you tell Governor Healy that we did that.
Liquor license, we did. Schedule the budget meeting dates. That's for, when do you want to meet with the highway building?
I'll reach out to Mark and see how close he is on it. I told him we were going to meet next week on his budget. Make sure we're ready to bring it to the board. Who does police typically? Is it you, Don, or Bob?
I don't.
Okay.
I'll see if he's ready.
And just for a quick point, I made this point to Mark as well. This might be a little different than prior years because as we're looking at a transition, it's probably better that the board members are more in touch with the background of the budget requests. So if you want to reach out, and I don't know if you want to work with Ed on the fire budget just to make sure that we all have different sense of what we're bringing forward.
I typically do the selectmen's budgets.
That's fine, but I mean, you know, I hate to say in April, we're the ones that are going to be, okay, why is this here? Why is this here? We need to have a good background information of why it's in the, in the thing. And I think when we talk about the selectmen's budget, in prior years, we've been, I won't say surprised, but I think we really got to be more on top of getting some of these quotes to us, i.e. whether it's the employee benefits, whether it's the insurance, whether it's the jump in, heck, the website stuff, stuff like that, it's.
We can control everything there except retirement board. We wait for their assessment.
Didn't I see the number coming? It was like a full 9%, wasn't it? There's, there's basically 90, 70 grand right off the new growth right there.
I do think we have to be cautious this year too with budgeting because of all the deficits now in the state that we're seeing. And, you know, that only rolls downhill, so.
I have a question, you know, we see the note from, that the governor's cutting some things. In the past, we've seen that happen, actually, even in the cherry sheet. That's been cut mid-year. Grants to the senior center that they work with, those have been cut mid-year. There's no guarantee.
No.
No.
Well, those revenues are falling, not, not meeting expectations. State requires a balanced budget.
Yeah.
Got to make the cuts.
Selectment reports.
So we have a planner, basically, we had a very good presentation from the firm doing the senior addition, I think that Becky forwarded it, Bob and the board as well. We see a couple of their proposals, definitely some, some thought there. The one good thing, although we couldn't tie him down, was that even though that seems like a little larger thing, it was not a huge increase in the cost of what's done. Once you open up a wall, she already opened up the wall. And to move a 10V further out doesn't double the cost of it. So that part's good. Planning board meets next week. Nothing huge on the agenda at this point. At some point, as Don said, we will be seeing the chap from the mini mall coming in for a review. I'm not sure if it's next week or the meeting after.
Planning committee is meeting tomorrow night. We just went over that. And a meeting Wednesday morning with the police union negotiator, not to exchange proposals, but just to set the general parameters of when we'll meet and dates so we can have an ongoing, you know, like, you know, every Wednesday or every Thursday or something like that. I told them I wanted to have it like on a Wednesday or Thursday so I could report to the board. We needed an executive session, you know, Monday.
Water cushions meeting tomorrow morning. And I think Parks and Recs is meeting on Wednesday this week.
On Wednesday now?
Please, oh, mine? Oh, Tuesday, that's fine, never mind.
Town administrative report.
Okay, we've gone through some of these already. We've mentioned the nine-C cuts. All those cuts are considered nine-C, although we colloquially refer to nine-C to mean local aid, chapter 90. But the cuts that she's implementing are also under section 29, nine-C cuts. I looked over the list of cuts. And there are going to be reductions to local boards of health, fire departments and senior centers. So these are the annual and standard grants that they receive are going to be trimmed back some. That's all the information we have. We have begun the process of updating the master grants spreadsheet and all ARPA expenditures. This is a, if you walk by the office, you'll see that we have that much paper.
Okay, will that be on the fish for us to look at?
What's that?
Will that be on the fish?
Oh, yeah.
Very great.
Yeah, it's going to take a few days to get it done, but then it'll be on laser fish.
I have one concern about, you all saw the report from Cliff. And I mentioned to Craig, the broadband grant, according to Cliff's notes, were in the, in the red $31,000. And I just wonder if that's accounting.
Are we talking about the $250,000 grant?
Yeah.
He's got it listed as 232. I don't know why.
Sorry?
Well, that might be, no, if it went over a fiscal year, that's what was at the start of the year.
There were some.
We spent, you know.
Some people have said it's a $200,000 grant. It's not, it's 250.
250, right.